June 11, 2012 Meeting of East Penn School District Board of Directors. Come to order, please rise and join me in speaking.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is a request to address the board, and we have several. I'll remind all speakers that our time limit is three minutes. And the first speaker will be Ms. Arlene Dabrow, speaking on budget zero increase.
Could you give me a minute to get this tractor on? I'm sorry, yeah. And we're going to come right up to here? I brought my question log. I had worked, oh, I had three minutes starting right.
Now I'm at it.
Okay. I don't want to get away from the clock. I've worked since I was thirteen. I've had no paying day jobs because we didn't have PEA and PDG and I was a student school. Those are programs that I helped create many years ago. So now I'm here and in my old age, I'm older, and what I have is a house that I have worked all my life to pay for. And my other security is my deceased husband. I lost my son six years ago. And my taxes and insurance now are all missing for all those people taking principal and interest on my property. I cannot afford to pay it now. And I brought a copy of my life history, excuse me, fifty cents a day to live on. It takes out to everybody here, that fifty cents a day after my fixed expenses with no home repairs is to cover food, gasoline, toilet paper, toothpaste, et cetera. I feel terrible that I will be wanting to take something away from the children, but I cannot afford to live. And if somebody said here, "I was able to watch the last meetings, the last few meetings online," and somebody made a statement, "Well, it's only going to be sixteen cents a day." Well, sixteen cents a day leaves me within thirty-four cents to date a living on. And I challenge any one of you to be able to do that. And it's not like I have not been actively seeking employment. Some of you may know that I just actively finished seeking a job and busy seeking other job opportunities, but they don't want to hire older people even though there's allegedly no discrimination. So with that, I wonder if I can pass out my budget to everybody?
Want to give it to Ms. Bertle, please, the second?
Ms. Bertle, and she'll pass it out because I did not put my name on it because it's a terrible way to do it. But I went out this past, in the past couple of days, and I gave out twenty-five cards announcing this meeting. And every single one of my fellow citizens in my area, Villalobos County Township Four, feel the same way. Nobody wants to hurt the children. We don't want to hurt the teachers, but we can't afford to pay it. I'm speaking for other senior citizens. My neighbor could not come with me tonight, but so we hope that you will open your ears and hear us. There are have-nots, and some of the have-nots are living near you. Take a walk around, look at the peeling paint on some of the houses. There are people that cannot afford to pay this sixteen cents more a day. Does anybody have any questions for me?
No engagement, give and take on these propositions, Ms. Dabrow.
Well, that's okay. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. If you don't, that's okay, I will take my seat.
That's fine, and I'd also like to point you to the district's tax rebate program that matters with the state.
I'm aware of it. I have, there are, there are a lot of people who are not aware of it though, but I have made other elderly citizens aware of it and in fact have helped them with their rebate forms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next person is Mr. Garrett Rhodes, speaking on budget vote.
I stand before the board tonight to express my concern regarding the vote taken at the previous board meeting to approve a proposed budget which included a not necessary tax increase. It was clearly presented that we have a $1.2 million PlanCon fund which is currently unspoken for and an uncommitted budgetary reserve over and beyond the reasonable and prudent 5% budgetary reserve, an attempt at an argument that these funds should be saved above and beyond the budgetary reserve.
For some possible unforeseen expense in the future, it has not germinated to the argument that we could, in fact, finally have a fiscal year that does not include a tax increase. It was further shown that this can be accomplished without any cuts to education, sports, arts, or other after-school activities. As an elected Lehigh County Republican Committee, you can imagine my distress when a board comprised of at least eight Republicans votes five to four to pass a budget which includes a tax increase when none is required. Five of you who were elected to office in the last election ran on a platform of being fiscal conservatives. Two pledged not to raise taxes and held their pledges. Three of you did not.
The three who voted for this tax increase all said during your campaigns that you would not raise taxes unless it was the only option left available to you. You have been presented with multiple options other than a tax increase this year, so I ask, will you honor your pledges to voters and citizens of the East Penn School District on June 25th, or were your words simply rhetoric used to capture votes? It has been demonstrated unequivocally that the funds needed to avoid a tax increase are already in our possession. To make the argument that other school districts aren't as fiscally responsible and that they have higher taxes and therefore our raising taxes just a little less when we don't need to is a sophomoric argument at best. I hope any further budget discussion by this board does not devolve into childish finger-pointing about what other districts in our area are doing. It does not matter what other school districts do. What matters is what our school district does. I don't think it's fair of this board to continue to financially victimize the lower and fixed income taxpayers of the district with continued and repeated tax increases year after year, especially when one is not required. Thank you very much for your time and opportunity to share my thoughts.
The next person I have is Julie Hess, speaking on no tax increase.
Good evening. Another one on no tax increase. For one, you have enough in the fund balance that you don't need a tax increase. You also have more money than you should have in there that you either go back and tax payers or do something with it. You're not being fair to the people that are paying the taxes, not being fair to the kids building that high Willow Lane school. That wasn't built for the care of the education of the kids. It was a showplace, and shame on you. You have enough in the fund balance, as everybody's been saying so far, that you don't need to raise taxes, so it's time you step up to the plate and do something about it. I'm ashamed to say there's people on the board that have no consideration for the taxpayers except for themselves. The Lehigh Valley has been pretty lucky as far as the economy is going. We stood on our own two legs. The country hasn't been so lucky in other states. We don't want to be the ones falling behind when everybody else is picking up. I thank you for your time, and please do the right thing by the tax payers.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. I believe this is Gary Ecto, speaking on tax.
Gary Ecto, 351 West Second Road, there's a gentleman stole my thunder there, but I'm saying the same thing he's saying. Can't keep raising taxes every year. Can't do it. Say it's only fifty or sixty dollars, that's just like, hey, think about ten years. What do you have then? Fifteen years. Mostly people mess up their food, all their life, or the house they lived in, that, that road, also not vertice. Not vertice, but it's line. And you, social purity, small pension, if you're looking up to have a pension, most people don't. Can't keep raising taxes every year. Just can't keep doing it. Kind of push people out of their houses. I'm going to be thinking about moving somewhere, I don't know where, someplace, I don't know. But that's my concern. Just can't keep raising taxes every year. Just look at this sports complex out here. You can't tell where we can't see it, but why don't you stop building places like this? Look at it. Look at it out here. My God. Do we need that? Do we really need something like that? I would Harrison, what we should walk across the river back to, go to Riverfront Park and play Fall River from Park. That's all we had, and that is all, remember? Think about that. Can't just spend, and spend, and spend, and spend. Thank you.
The last person I have speaking is Ms. Claire Kowalczuk, speaking on quality education.
Good evening, Dr. Seidenberger and members of the board. I have just a few brief remarks. Can you hear me on tape? Regarding the proposals made at the last board meeting to use money from the fund balance toward tax cuts or even zero percent tax increase, I agree with those who point out that this is fiscally unsound and jeopardizes not only the necessary funding of our schools, but also the ability of the administration to budget toward low tax increases. As for the comments made in favor of red casting these meetings, I ask that you please spend taxpayer dollars first and foremost on educating our students. And finally, I'd like to commend you, Dr. Seidenberger, and your entire administration for your excellent work. As we've watched neighboring districts Allentown, Easton, Bethlehem, Parkland cut upward of forty-six, leave seventy-five staff in teaching positions, yet remain forced to raise taxes over 3%, nearly 5% in some cases, we in East Penn have been treated to two consecutive years of tax increases under 2%. Though our district too suffers cuts to programs and teaching positions, these reductions are not nearly as deep as what we see on around us. Small tax increases, quality education left largely intact at a time when funding of education across our state has been cut by nearly $1 billion. These are the outcomes of excellent long-term planning, smart budgetary management, and a deep and genuine regard for students, educators, and the value of quality education to all citizens. We are very fortunate to have you and your team working for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the requests to address the board I have. The next item will be approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Summit. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Exchanges?
Yes, I have one, one change on page eight. The material that I distributed for the board, it actually says it has been produced or validated by the East Penn staff. So I thought that it was produced, so I made the decision that I have not been.
Okay. Any other comments or corrections? None appearing. We'll vote on the minutes as it ended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, minutes are approved as it ended. We now have a, not here, I can't, couldn't see him, I am Mr. Kraft there. We now have a presentation from our friends at Public Financial Management, Mr. Scott Share.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I have a brief handout here that would like to go over.
Well, good evening again, Scott Share with Public Financial Management. While that's being passed around, we'll just give you a little bit of background why I'm here this evening. Just like earlier in this calendar year, we're trying to take advantage of the lower interest rates right now. So what we are proposing is to refinance two of your outstanding bond issues. The market is actually still cooperating very well, although last week things were very unsettled in the municipal bond world. We saw interest rates start to uptick quite a bit to long-term municipal bonds to the tune of about fifteen to twenty basis points, which is a pretty substantial jump from one given week. But what we have here on the table this evening that we wanted to present to you is to sort of put you at the finish line if you wanted to, to take advantage of this next refinancing as early as possible. Because actually the two bond issues that we're looking at are not legally or were not legally able to be refinanced until basically this time. So the timeline that we're putting on the table, that again is basically the most proactive that we can be to kind of get you at the finish line if you wanted to, at the earliest legal time. Sort of with that, with that background, why don't we briefly walk through the handout on page one. Just gives you a highlight of the two bond issues that we're focused on right now. We're focused on the Series Double A of 2004. There's about 3.5 million outstanding on those bond issues. The call date is this November, so when you back up, according to IRS regulations, again puts us right to this date, or when we can actually legally start, start this process. The final maturity of these bonds is November 15, 2018, so it's a relatively short transaction, which will probably not result in a home run savings, but it will, I think, hopefully work out pretty well to your advantage if you do want to proceed with it. The Series 2007, the other bond issue we're looking at, just a little under 9 million outstanding on those bonds. Again, the call date for those is the same time, November 15 of this year, and this bond issue goes out a little bit further to 2028. Now, you will see under discussion item, the second point on page one, as you remember, typically when I'm here, we talk a lot about keeping transactions $10 million or under, take advantage of the bank qualification designation, which allows the school district to receive preferential interest rates. So you see that between the Series Double A of 2004 and 2007 bonds, that obviously exceeds $10 million when you add those two together. So what we'd be proposing to do is refund all of the 2004 bonds, which again is just about three and a half million, and a good portion of the '07s to keep the transaction just under that bank qualified limitation, and then at some later date when you have another transaction to do another refinancing, say next year, a few years from now, then we can come back and try to clean up the balance of those bonds. It's a similar plan to what we've done before here at the school district, but there is a very, a pretty substantial rate benefit by keeping the transaction under $10 million. So the tune of roughly twenty-five to forty basis points, so almost just a little under half percent. So there's a lot of value in taking that $10 million under role. And it also allows you, the board and the administration, to move forward on these transactions with five-year call features. Benefit of the five-year calls, I think you'll see from the last page of the handout, has proven very worthwhile for the district over the year because it does allow you to refund this debt that market conditions warrant, that you can actually achieve a fair amount of savings. So I think that the shorter call features that we have been able to put on your debt have worked out very well for you over the past ten years or so, at least since I've been working with East Penn. So that's sort of the plan of finance. So this evening, from a timeline perspective, I believe there's a motion on the agenda to move forward as long as the net savings, the net issuance cost in the net of state share of the savings exceeds quarter of a million dollars, which is typically a normal benchmark that we look at, free spend for this kind of transaction, the amount and the duration of it. And then depending on the market conditions, if you do want to move forward, we would try to be back for your July 9th. Now, that's kind of a Monday, sort of after a slow holiday week, so I think we'd like to get, again, if everyone wanted to move forward, we would try to get everything geared up for that July 9th date, to actually receive the bids, to come to you that evening with the final results. But if we find that the market's pretty sluggish because of the holiday week, we may want to move that to your next date, but that's something that I think we should at least gear up towards the earliest possible date, you know, we can always kind of pull from the market if we deem it necessary, if the market's not there. So that's sort of the timing that we're looking at. On page two, you've seen this chart many times before, so I won't get into a lot of details, but this is an illustration of the district's overall debt. The top half is what I call gross debt service, that's both pre-interest, that's due on a fiscal year basis. Columns five and 10, the two that are highlighted in blue, purple there, those are the two bond issues that we're focused on. The bottom half is your local effort requirements, that's the net of state share of your fiscal year payments. We would like to show both on there. And then if you go all the way down to the bottom, it shows the various call dates for each one of your transactions. So again, right now, we're looking at the two that have 2012 call dates, and you see that there's two, if you go down below columns 30 and 31, there's two transactions, two pretty short transactions that have 2013 call dates, so short-term rates stay pretty low over next year at this time. We would look to come back and share with you that opportunity, hopefully it would exist, and then you have another call date or two in 2014 and 2015. So this would be the last transaction, at least opportunity to refund some of your existing debt for about a year. So again, those are the two main bond issues that we're focused on right now. As far as briefly going through the numbers, let's start on page four. This is the existing structure of the 2004 Double A bonds. On column three on page four are the existing interest rates ranging from a 3.75 out to a 4.5. Then if you go to page five, this is the series of 2007 bonds as they currently exist. And again, if you look in column three, rates range from three and a half to 4.3. These are actually very low rates that are on these bond issues that we're looking to refinance, but it's just we're in such incredibly low interest rates right now, that's actually what produces this opportunity at the moment. But when we did these respective deals in 2004 and 2007, they were very low, very low interest rates. And if you see that on page six, we're proposing, these are the bonds or the portion of the bond issue of the 2007 series that we're looking to refund. And then on page seven, you'll see that in column two, we're leaving just a little under 3 million outstanding of those bonds, and again, that's something that we would hope to be able to capture those savings maybe in 2013 if the market conditions warrant doing those other transactions at the time. So again, just want to point out that we're not refunding all of the 2007 bond issues. Then we jump to page nine. This would be what the new bond issue looks like. If we would have done this, I'm going to put the handout together. In column three are the new estimated rates ranging from a 1.56 out to a 3.8, so they average out to about a 3.26. So more or less you're going from, say, a low 4% interest rate on average to a low 3%. And by dropping the interest rate of 4.1%, that's what's generating the savings, over in column 10 on the right-hand side of about $300,000. And that would be realized in the 1213. Again, this is based on estimated interest rates as of, you know, a day or two ago. That's why we'd like to set that target in there, so as long as we'd be above the $250,000, we would execute the transaction if we did move the motion forward this evening. Again, that, that savings number is net of the issuance cost, which I estimate on the following page, as well as the state's share of savings. So as always, we like to show you the true bottom line benefit that the district will be realizing from this transaction. And then lastly, on page 11, I like to show this periodically, just to give you an idea as to what the benefit of these refinancings has generated over the past few years for the school district. If we go back to 1998, kind of when I started to handle the district's account, we're looking at the refinancings that we were able to do, just as a pair under $10 million of net service savings that we've been able to realize since that time. So hopefully this transaction takes over that $10 million. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have with your motion or with my numbers, market.
First, can we have a motion so some of the motions on table? Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Share? Mr. Walker?
Can you explain how this works? The bonds aren't callable until November, but we can actually refinance them in July?
Correct. So the way the IRS, we always have to call federal guidelines and state guidelines. One of the IRS guidelines, the federal guidelines that we have to follow, which would be considered current here to refunding, you're allowed to settle the transaction ninety days prior to the call date. So that would take us basically to August 15th. So we kind of back up in time from November 15th to August 15th, that's ninety days. The Pennsylvania bond market basically allows you to sell the bond, or price the bond, about 30 to 40 days prior to that. So that takes us kind of perfectly right to that July 9th date. So the July 9th is when we'd actually lock in the rates, lock in the savings through the competitive process, and then there'd be a lot of work needs to be done. The state would have to approve the financing, and that usually takes about 30 days or so. So that would take us to pretty much that August 15 settlement date.
Ms. Fuller?
Yeah, and I would just like to note that it's interesting to see that the Keo notes series city of 2003, by June 30th of next year, will only disappear from prison, so be paid off.
Yes.
As well as the Keo bond series of 2006 will also be paid off.
Correct.
So the diligent effort on the part of the administration, and of course your good counsel and the sense of the board to follow your recommendations, $1.6 million of the debt will be off of our books next year at the end of our fiscal year.
You have a couple of bond issues, if you go back to page two, you have a couple that are pretty short, just only five or six years remaining on quite a few of them. Your 2008 bonds are relatively short, they pay off soon. Your 2008 As, 2009s. So overall, you know, when you look at your whole debt portfolio, this is something the rating agency looks at. They look very closely at how rapid you're paying down your debt, and that's, you know, one of the, one of the positives of why East Penn does have a very good credit rating on the Double A too. I mean, that's one of the factors that they do consider, and that always, you know, that always looks very good. I mean, also, if you go over to column, say, 19 on page two, the district is positioned very well as far as how your debt portfolio is structured, where you're kind of at an annual principal and interest, your annual running rate of about 15.5 million gross debt service for another four or five years, then you have a pretty, pretty drastic drop off of your debt. So that does allow you a lot of flexibility once you get to that point in time, you know, to make other decisions then. So unlike a lot of other situations where the debt service may be pretty much liable for the next 20, 30 years on a lot of issues, you do have that ability in a few years to kind of take advantage of that in one way or another. And again, that's one of the things that ratings seems to look very favorable for.
Other questions, Mr. Share? I have a couple. I want to have you explain what I think is true, and make sure that I understand correctly. When you're talking about the earliest legal time for refunding and the receipt of those funds, those funds from these refundings do not accrue to this year's budget, correct?
Correct.
They accrue to next year's.
The savings? The savings would belong to the 1213 budget, is correct? And the way that falls into place is this thoroughly lower debt service payment that you're going to realize in the 1213 year. So basically, you will realize, you will realize probably the biggest component of the benefit around November 15th of upcoming fiscal year, and then a smaller amount of savings on May 15th. So that's, that's how, whenever we do a refunding transaction, it's not like a windfall check that you get at settlement. It's thoroughly reduced debt service payment that you will pay throughout the fiscal year. So this one can occur basically in November. The offer's going to be realized in November, and then a small amount in May of 2013. But it would all occur in 1213.
1213, yes. So it's not money available to do anything with this year's budget, is what I'm trying to stress.
It's not money available for this year's budget, and the key thing, because of the volatility in the market, I get this question asked by a lot of clients, you know, here we are a month away from the potential bond transaction, locking the savings, should we budget anything now for that? Clearly, my answer is no, because we have no idea what the market's going to do between now. Like I said, just last week, we saw an increase in interest rates of about 20 basis points. Who knows what should happen over the next month? But it's definitely not savings you could realize in the current fiscal year, and it's not something that I have a budget for at all. and it's not something that I have a budget for, uh, at all.
Not Mr.?
Correct.
All right, and the second thing is, you talked about the, uh, bond ratings, and we, and we did AA2, I think you said?
Correct, I do use.
Yes. And, um, the bond rating agencies look at various factors in making that determination. And if they downgraded our bond rating, for example, that would cause a rise in the interest rates that we would pay, probably for these bonds, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, it depends on the magnitude of the downgrade. Um, I would say, and right now, again, you're in the AA2 category, just for everyone in the background, AAA is the best you can get. There's only two of those in the state. AAA is the best, and there's AA1, and then there's AA2, which is where these tend to fall. And there's AA3, so all those three are in the AA category. Then you jump down to the A, single A category, and the A1, A2, A3. So, and this is not uncommon, we, we see it from time to time, although we don't like to see it, jump, go in from, say, AA2, which is where you are now, to say A1. Correct. A drop of about two notches. Um, in those instances, I'd say typically when we go to do the next bond issue for that particular issuer, you may see an increase in interest rates, um, to the tune of about half a percent.
Okay, and, um, the bond rating agencies, one of the factors that they take into account in, uh, performing their, uh, ratings of our bonds, is the, uh, budgetary and undesignated fund balances that we have in the district, correct?
Absolutely. Right. They, they look very, uh, very closely at, at fund balances. Unsigned, signed, committed, you know, whatever you want to call them, they, they look very closely at the liquidity of the school district, the flexibility of the school district. Um, I mean, I mean, that, just the fund balance concept in general, uh, falls into, both credit rating agencies are changing their criteria on how they rate, the tools that they're concerned with, uh, whereas you're kind of helping them with the new process of what is, is most fair. I would say, um, close to 50% of, of the rating criteria, they have different buckets on where things fall into place. Fund balance probably factors in at about 50% of the rate, in different, in sort of different fashion. Some is, uh, you know, they like to see, uh, balances there for contingent liabilities, such as retirement and OPAP. Those are actually becoming very, very, uh, key items that rating agencies are looking at, not only for school districts, but for cities, counties, towns, boroughs, uh, you name it, that with obligations. They, they are actually putting a, a lot of emphasis on those two items, uh, that you're kind of putting money aside for those future liabilities, because they are getting to be very large. Um, you know, just having liquidity available, uh, meaning having, you know, the fund balance available, they put that, uh, in a very high regard. So, you know, again, whether it's committed, unsigned, uncommitted, whatever the case may be, they do put a lot of emphasis.
Okay, and I would also presume that, that it is entirely possible, or sufficient change in our bond rating could wipe out the total amount of the savings that we would otherwise get in our refunding.
Uh, let me just see here. So if we go back to that example that we, that we talked about, let's just say you would drop down to A1, and, you know, maybe your interest rate would increase by 40 or 50 basis points. I would say the sensitivity of 10 basis points or 10th percent on your transaction, uh, is probably about $80,000. So that would more than wipe out, let's see, that would put you kind of negative 100,000 out there, pretty, in round.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, I mean, these are, these are very, these are very sensitive transactions. I mean, like I told you before, your, the, the rates on these existing bonds are already pretty low. Um, and, you know, we're in an unfortunate situation where we can't take advantage of the low rates, but it doesn't take you much of an uptake in rates or, due to the market itself, or due to credit rating issues, where these savings would be included for you.
Okay. Ms. Donchus?
I can go ahead to the second, um, that was the contingent liabilities and, uh...
OPAP. Uh, other, uh, post-employee benefits, that's like healthcare for retirees. I mean, that's actually becoming sort of the, uh, the, the next, uh, the next wave of major financial issues for governments around the country is the OPAP liability. Similar to the, similar to pensions, but it's for healthcare.
Mr. Urshon?
Yeah, Mr. Scherer, on page two, at the bottom, it shows the principal balance of the district's debt is $126.3 million. Is that as of the, as of now, or as of the end of this fiscal year?
That says the June 7th. It's put it down very, very bottom of the, very fine print, as of June 7th, 2001.
Do we have any additional bond payments coming out this fiscal year, or are those all being made at this point?
I don't think you have any, uh, your bond payments either on the 1st of every month or the 15th of every month. I don't believe you have any June 15th payments. Most years are, uh, September or April or May, but I don't, I don't believe there's been a June here.
All right, so, so we'll end this fiscal year with just over $126 million in total indebtedness, and I'm guessing we're paying off somewhere between 11 and 12 million dollars in principal every year, is that the current rate?
That's about a fair, that's a fair assumption.
That's true. Thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Walker, do you have a question for Mr. Scherer?
Um, the structure of this deal seems much different than the, you know, we did last, uh, end of last year, early this year, in terms of this has, um, basically all the savings in the first year. Um, could you explain the, the difference in the structure of the deals?
Yeah, a couple of points, that's, that's a good point. Number one, uh, just like in all of, all the transactions that we do here, we are not proposing to change the structure of your existing debt. So if you look to, on columns four, or I'm sorry, on pages four and five, the respective end dates of, of each of those bond issues, we maintain, uh, we maintain those same end dates on this new bond issue. So again, we're not changing the structure of either, keeping the same weighted average life when you compare the two deals that we're funding versus the new deals. As far as the refunding savings, um, the reason we're actually able to capture all the savings in year one on this transaction is because we're act, we have principal that we can refund in there early year. The prior transaction, I need to look at, at, look at the details of the prior transaction, but I believe that has very little principal, uh, in, in the front year, and so that was the reason why the savings were put down. So it's basically just, uh, the, the way the saving to realize is just the, uh, sort of reflection on how that deal was initially structured. Sometimes when we've done new money transactions for the district over the years, sometimes we've structured them kind of like your mortgage, where it's 20-year level debt or, you know, 30-year level debt. Other times, what we've done was called wraparound structures, where you have very little principal in the first five years, 10 years, whatever the case may be, and you defer the principal until your other debt pays off. And there's pros and cons to doing both, depending on where and when we're doing it. And so I believe the prior transaction that we did was a refunding or a wraparound, and this is now a refunding, basically.
Most likely interest in your term.
Any other questions for Mr. Scherer? Are there any other discussion on the motion? Nonappearing, Ms. Hertz will be your call.
Mr. Urshon?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Donovan?
Aye.
Ms. Fuller?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Stolt?
Aye.
Ms. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Nino?
Thank you very much. We're always willing to have a good visit from public financial management.
Keep your fingers crossed for the one.
That $9 million is coming in.
For your retirement.
The next item on the agenda is the district update by Dr. Thomas Seidberg.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Glad to be here, I so to speak. First of all, I want to compliment, um, all of our students, the administration, the teaching staff, parents, community members, citizens, whatever, especially the parents and students who work with Mr. Pepperata. I think all the efforts contributed to the outstanding graduation ceremony yesterday was just, I think, a plausible day, and I think, uh, reading the local catch, I think ACP was restored to be that last year, it was kind of a black eye, but this year, I think the students really responded, and I think the changes made to the ceremony itself were, were significant and wonderful. Giving out the plumbos every year, I really felt that we had more time to make eye contact and, and give each student a diploma, much so, and the faculty mentality we've had the last couple of years where it's been hard to keep up, uh, as you give one diploma, the other kid's on top of you. But I think all the changes made yesterday were made a very, um, gratifying, and I hope, um, that, you know, Mr. Pepperata thanks the class of 2012, but the class of 2013 was paying attention, because, uh, they now have to meet the new challenge. And I can't tell you, I, I, let's see, this is my 24th year of the Super League, so that was, um, 24 graduations, including a couple eighth grade graduates. And I honestly tell you, it's the first time I didn't see a beach ball in my life. And I think that's only one in a row. That itself was a real tribute to how hard those folks worked on making that on a good day. Um, sorry again, I'm sorry I wasn't here to report on some wonderful things going on in the district, uh, last board meeting, but, um, we had an excellent meeting, it used to be called STEM, now we're calling it STEAM, about a month ago. Ms. Snowak, Mrs. Campbell, and I hosted a meeting with about 25 citizens there and parents, and the, the kind of educational and career background of the people attending was really amazing. And I can tell you that there's a lot of interest in what we're doing with STEM, and a lot of parental support, and I can tell you that our goal is to continue that group next year, uh, and certainly work with those parents. And as we move into the planning process, um, I think that is a, that's gonna be a great resource for us to tap. And in fact, that's one of the questions we ask the parents, if they want one recommending future partnerships, uh, for us, and I think we got some valuable data. And again, I think there was a lot of interest and a lot of support, and I think it was just an excellent, um, an hour and a half, and, uh, the agenda was good, I want to thank Ms. Snowak and Mrs. Campbell for, for their representation, getting that off the ground. And I'm looking forward to continuing with that. And one of the things that we're gonna be doing this summer is hopefully, I'll send an invitation out to board members, uh, our, our group is going to see if we can take a visit to Downingtown High School, where they built a specific, uh, instead of building a third high school, they built a STEM high school. And I think we're seeing that more and more, as schools get into new designs. We'll keep up to date on that. Um, also want to take a moment to, uh, recently, we got results back from the state science fair, and we're very pleased, I think we told you about local results here, they are in the statewide, Long Island County Middle School. 32 first-place awards, 32 first-place awards, two perfect scores, 14 second places, three third places. IRE, 23 first-place results, one perfect score, 15 second-place awards and two third-place awards. And in May's high school, 14 first-place awards, seven second awards. And we certainly want to thank teachers and students involved in another amazing, uh, display of interest in science, and, and our kids did spectacularly again. Um, I also want to give you an update. As you know, we came to the board about two months ago, and discussing what parents wanted things they wanted to return, um, to print was the annual school calendar. Um, as you know, we made that a cut last year, a green proposition, so Nicole Boyes has been very hard. I walked in her office the other day, she's been out marketing the district, and we probably about 60% of the money collected already, but I just want to thank those folks publicly who stepped up and are going to donate. Certainly, we'll start with these Penn Education Association, Teachers Association, have stepped up, made nice generous donations. Wesley Works, Giant Food Stores, Express Business Center, Alberta Samuel House School, and our local McDonald's, they're all going to chip in, help pay for the school calendar. So Nicole is optimistic, and if you've been around her, you know, um, that she's a gold setter, and she gets a lot of things done, uh, for this district. Tomorrow, the last day of school, it's hard to believe, but another year finished. Our students and our staff will be out here by about 11 o'clock, 11:30 tomorrow. We just hope everyone remains safe over the holidays, and I think it was an exceptional school year again. But the board and the committee should know that we're gonna be very, very busy this summer. A lot of things that the school districts don't stop over the summer. Certainly we'll have all our special education programs, our extra, uh, summer school year programs are operating. Um, we're gonna be continuing our work on instructional rounds, we have a workshop on June 26th, and then we'll be coming back in, in August to continue our work on clearly developing a, a solution for problem solving throughout the district so that we can communicate with the board, parents, and the citizen desk exactly what we're doing with problem solving. And also, we just released, and, I apologize, a great, nice board meeting, a draft of, our grid of quality instructional practices that we would expect if teachers followed religiously, then we'll have good things happen, um, in each classroom. We put that out to the staff for, for some comment, and we're very excited about that. Some of the other neat work we're going to do this summer is gonna work on, on ebooks, or we're gonna be looking at a group of high school science, uh, excuse me, English teachers, social studies teachers, possibly some middle school science teachers, and fifth-grade social studies, um, teachers are gonna work on our first attempt at looking at electronic books. And so Michael Wong will be bringing people together, there's a format, there's a structure that we want to adhere to, certainly, um, looking at copyright rules is very important to us, but this is something that we're very excited about and moving on. And we are working with other school districts and, and, um, trying to keep in contact with other places they've started to contribute, and, uh, I'm confident that our teachers will go bang up shop this summer. Also, we've, we've realigned our staff development almost completely in two years. Uh, when I got to this district, we had a steady stream of, uh, people say the word but drop in and forget about workshops. You know, it was a huge book where people could pick things, and, and we just felt that that wasn't the way to go. We surveyed staff, and over a period of two years now, we've, we've really made our staff development more meaningful at about 50% less than the cost used to be. And so there's gonna be a lot of activities going on in each of the buildings this summer. Um, and then we will certainly, um, have an array of workshops for teachers, but the neat thing this year is we'll, we're gonna bring Mr. Wong to, uh, to give you an update in August. I think I'll, I'll talk about that in a moment, too. But now teachers can literally register and follow their courses online, and we do have some courses that are fully online as well, so. Certainly want to thank, um, Ms. Snowak, Mrs. Campbell, and Dr. Torma, and all the principals really for the exceptional work, Mrs. Pecari, Mrs. Mira, all our staff are doing an incredible job of making staff development more meaningful in this district. And in this case, less is more. And I think our, our teachers are appreciative factors, listen to them, and, uh, we're very happy. In addition, we'll be doing our usual curriculum alignment, Ms. Snowak has people ready to go. Hopefully we'll be able to employ, next board meeting, a director secondary of curriculum, and that person will be leading, um, um, high school work as well. And our main focus is to realign the district with common course standards, and that is, it is a big deal. Recently, several had an opportunity to participate, um, in Lehigh Study Council, we run meetings of, uh, once every other month, and while we just depend on social media, this was outstanding, there was a panel of, um, people from school districts out in Pennsylvania, but Ohio, some from New Jersey. And I think, uh, Mrs. Boyes and I came away convinced that, um, once we come back in September, we'll certainly start moving to a different area, and we will, uh, have Twitter, we'll have a Facebook page, and I'm excited to tell you tonight for the first time that we now have our own i2, i2 new device, and so we will be able to share our work, uh, all over the world. And so, for instance, if your grandmother lives in California, you'll be able to download your grandson or granddaughter's work, and see that entirely if that teacher wants to upload the kids' work. We're really excited about that. And again, that's part of the work we will be doing this summer, and that doesn't cost anything. That's free licensing. All you have to do is make sure we follow all of Apple's, all the rules and regulations, and we're excited. And again, with people like Michael Wong and Pat Tomlin, and having a savvy, um, newly registered person such as Mrs. Boyes, we're, we're gonna be, I think, really well possible this year. And that leads me, I know, and I want to thank Dr. Torma for announcing this, but, um, I do want to emphasize tonight how excited I am as a superintendent, um, to have our district selected by National School Boards Association to be a technology visitation site. Let me explain what this means. Several times, it's a big deal. We're our first school district in Pennsylvania to be selected by National School Boards Association. Next year, the four districts that will be visited, Miami-Dade, Molineville, Illinois, and Vancouver, and for the first time in history of Pennsylvania, a Pennsylvania school district. So what does it mean? Well, let me explain what it means. We'll have anywhere from hundreds, 150, educated... We'll have anywhere from hundreds to 150 educators, board members from all over the country who will come to Lehigh Valley. And again, I want you to think this is not only a feather in our cap, but this is a boost for tourism in the Lehigh Valley as well. Because these people will be staying in local hotels. We made recommendations to School Boards Association. They do all the negotiating, by the way. One of the things, they need a hotel that has a vault because there is a reception and sort of an orientation program. And certainly, next April, I will be inviting whoever the board president is at that point to come in and make welcoming remarks to our visitors. We'll be, they'll be working with our staff to coordinate buses because the first date is the 29th when people will be coming. And what our staff, we will be doing is constructing themes so that visitors will select probably a theme based visit, you know, visit three different schools. And we're also going to partner with LCTI, I talked to Sandy Himes. And for those people who want to go see the best tech ed program in the country, we'll create a special one day visit with Sandy, though she's excited about sharing the lineup. It's part of, they're part of us. And so those people, maybe 10 to 15 will often have a wonderful day at LCTI. Other people then will visit actual classrooms and see what's going on as teachers use a variety of technology, anywhere from iPods with kids with ELLs to iPads. Especially students do the wonderful work that people are doing in classrooms all over this district. We're going to make it a sort of, I think these are more competition, but we'll make it a proposal format when people come back in September, we'll actually have them create a presentation and then we'll judge them somehow. I know that people will be excited to have visitors. The last day, which will be, I'm sorry, April 30th, we will be doing workshops, probably about 12 to 15 different workshops where our teachers and our staff will present our workshops. And again, our visitors will have an opportunity to choose three workshops. And we'll do workshops ranging anywhere from Dr. Torma, the wonderful work we've done with eFolios, Mr. Stavenger with our dashboard, to the kind of wonderful playhouse of Mr. Diddler with students designing that playhouse. So, and again, we'll be picking out a full array of things. Mrs. Flynn from, Anne Flynn from National School Boards Association will be visiting us this summer to get all the logistics down pat. So we are excited about this visit. As we have events, certainly board members will be invited. The other thing we'll try to do, when I was in, last year, you find out too much, we go to local, the local chamber of commerce did a nice thing for us and they had a visit sponsor that kept everybody together for dinner. And again, with local businesses, the chamber of commerce, they have our tours and we'll look and see if we can find sponsors to sponsor an evening for our visitors Monday, the 29th, the National Science Summit, which I think will be another fascinating visit. And of course, we'll continue with the theme of education and technology. So we're really excited about having this national meeting. Any questions for that? More processing in particular one. So it'll just be our cooperation and our staff and making a real, I think, a brochure and advertising that people will come on in there. Now the one thing that Michael's talking about, Michael Moen, now I'm giving, borrowing. When people come here, they'll get an iPad and be able to follow procedures online. And when they do leave, we'll be giving people a flash drive, every workshop, even the ones that they missed. And so we want this to be incredibly exciting visit. So stay tuned, we're getting more information regarding that. Okay, I do want to spend a couple of minutes giving you an update on the budget. And I think the first thing I'm going to ask Mr. Clancy, because this has had an impact on the budget and this is something that we haven't talked about in all of our documents so far, but it could have an impact on our revenues for next year. So Mr. Clancy, perhaps you can give everyone an update on the NIS.
Thank you, Dr. Slender. Several months ago, I did update the board on the neighborhood improvement zone in Allentown and the involvement of the Lehigh Tax Collection Committee, which I'm a member of, as appointed by this board. Several months ago, we requested Allentown and the NIS to give us financial information on what the impact would be to school districts and townships in Lehigh County. Berghheimer was able to code the different areas of Allentown, whether they were included in the NIS zone or not. And after five months, they've been able to give us the financial. After five months, we're looking at $39,000 for East Penn School District. Excuse me, that's for one quarter.
Quarter.
That's the first quarter, right?
First quarter.
First quarter. So it's $160,000 roughly, impact for East Penn for a year. And that unfortunately will be held up for nine months, which means that we will not get it until the end of the next fiscal year. So that will have an impact on our earning on tax for the year and that will have an impact on our budget. Are you happy to answer any other questions or do you want to add? Do you really understand that? Understand that it wasn't the city of Allentown that produced these numbers as little as they were supposed to. It is the county tax collection agency that the Lehigh Tax Collection Committee employed that finally came up with the numbers. We never got them directly from Allentown. By the way, I'm an alternate on that committee still and I want to point that out. Mr. Ursh.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. There's been some question from what I've read of whether, exactly how the financing works. I've heard conflicting stories. So from Senator Brown's office, at one point it was, well, they'll only spend the state tax monies, the income taxes and the sales taxes. And then after all the bond obligations are met for the year, then the earned income taxes will be returned. I've heard more recently the statement that all the taxes collected will be paid out proportionately. So earned income taxes is 8% of the total taxes collected in the neighborhood improvement zone. 8% of the bond, the principal interest, the bond payments will come from earned income taxes and then the balance will be refunded. Some things I've heard have said it'll go towards building the hockey arena, but will also then can be used by private developers to finance large amounts of additional construction in the zone, not only in the downtown area, but also along the riverfront. And so the private developers can put up maybe 5 to 10% of the total cost of a project. The rest will be paid out of tax monies, but at the end, when those bonds are paid off, the properties will be owned in total, 100% by the developers who only put up 5 to 10%. So of all the things I'm carrying, it makes me really worried that, okay, maybe we'll get some of this back, maybe we'll get all of it back this year, but down the road, five or 10 years into this improvement zone, we may be getting nothing back. So I think we need a lot of clarity from the state legislature over what the true intent of that legislation was and for them to pass clarifying legislation to correct any deficiencies. Of course, whenever the legislature acts, they may or may not improve it, either intentionally or unintentionally. Whatever they do may serve to cause additional issues for us. So I think at this point, the jury is completely out. There are still pending lawsuits, from what I understand, by several municipalities, at least one school district and as well as private interests who have filed, to my knowledge, at least three different lawsuits against the state of Pennsylvania to try to have the law declared unconstitutional. So, but I'm curious if they're going to use the tax dollars, including the earned income, to pay legal fees to defend. I don't know what's going to happen, but we probably need to be fairly conservative in how we treat these funds for our budget. Just because I've got a whole page. Sorry about the problems we're having with the VA system. So I've got a whole page full of question marks and I think until we have answers, we can't count on anything at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ursh. Mr. Ursh.
I've been on this board long enough, Mr. Ballard. $160,000 is a lot of money. It's basically Dr. Seidberg's salary. And I was questioning whether or not it would be fiscally approved to join the lawsuit that several municipalities have filed to try to get the slow return. But to the tune of $160,000 a year, it seems like it might be approved with this. Has the administration researched that at all? Is there any recommendation at this time?
Our position has been, let's sit on the sidelines rather than spending some dollars. We think that the suits are in, basically what we've talked about is the future, that's what Hanover Township, I live in Hanover Township, so that's what they're most, so being close to Hanover Township, I pay attention, I get my newsletters. So if they're willing to take the lead, I'm willing to let them spend. If there were, if there were a reason why I think we should join it, I would recommend it. But at this point, I think most school districts are sitting on the sidelines.
Do you don't feel that more municipalities joining the suit might lend way to the courts when they make a decision?
We haven't. We could also always file a front of the court brief or some other method that isn't quite as expensive as playing the suit.
Yeah, but an advocate's brief require a motion from the court to authorize that?
It would be a matter of session discussion.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Clancy. I also, my superintendent's update last week gave you an update about assessment appeals. I do want to caution, that's something else we haven't talked about a long time. As we heard from Mr. Under the other day, we just lost a rather large appeal to our largest tax payer. And we have, we're in litigation regarding the second largest paying tax group. They're both commercial entities. And so it's not lighting, it's not complaining, it's a fact of life that still our tax base could be eroded. And I think at some point, we really need to give you the net result over the last three or four years as to how our tax base has been eroded through assessment appeals. And I'll come back to that in a couple of moments. Just to give you an update, we get overwhelmed with information today. I got my PASA update. And I have no clue tonight. We've heard for the better part of the month, that June 13th would be today, that the deal is struck between, among the governor and Senate and the House, but I have no idea if that's going to happen. I read one accounting where they're 500 billion apart, another accounting where they're coming close and there are side deals, as Mr. Ballard would say. It's a silly season, there's some things going on that make me nervous. So we'll just have to wait and see what's going on. But I think for us here, and at least for me, my passion, I'm excited that at least it was a bill that seems to be getting some traction, that representative's flex bill on fair funding for charter school payments and that would include cyber charter schools. It's going to get me to some resistance from some folks, but there are at least 38 legislators who signed on to our legislation. And we're optimistic because that will look at all the elements that we consider right now to be factors that are not included in how we pay for cyber and charter schools. Curiously enough, it's really great interest, but even the governor is now admitting that something has to be done with cyber charter school payments. And as you know, we've done a lot of homework on our superintendent's script in Lehigh County. And by any fair estimation, we're overpaying this year and probably will pay overpay by about $325,000. So for those of you who are looking to limit tax liabilities out of the place where you should definitely get on board and let, now we have Mr. McKenzie on board telling me that you support legislation that curbs overpaying for cyber charter schools. And again, I'm just going to give you the down and dirty facts, folks. Some people may like it, some may not like it. I called Tom Gensit today and we're almost 100% sure that in every suburban district in the state of Pennsylvania, every suburban district that has a charter school that was chartered by the home district, in each one of those districts this year will be a tax increase or massive cuts in budgets. That's just the way it is. I called Tom Gensit because I think that should be important information. You certainly check out our research, but as PSBA and other organizations move to support representative flex, I think that's something that we certainly have noticed over at least last year and this year, with the state withdrawing any reimbursements and overpaying cyber charter schools, folks had is a million dollars. And that is no chunk change. So we certainly want to encourage school boards to fight for that. And again, with that kind of information, I think that's, that's so important. I do want to remind the board that things are going on and we do look at what's going on in neighborhood. Lehigh County with nine districts, seven love tax increases, two love no tax increase. And while we're right now, as I sent you out my superintendent update the other night and for the public, here's where we are at this particular point in time. We have decreased our budget significantly since even the last time we met. I think it was 1.89, we're now at 1.56. Certainly that's less than the index, we're very proud about that. People like to know down in dirty numbers. At this point, it's $48.10 an increase for average taxpayer and about 1.72 mil increase. But there are some things that I do want to discuss. Again, not being here last week, I do know that Mr. Sertewol, who did her due diligence and as far as I'm concerned, the only controversial thing that we cut out of the budget might have been transportation for about 325 kids of a little age. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that. I don't want to be accused of sandbagging people not being transparent. And so you need to know that's worth about $60,000 in terms of restoring that transportation or letting it go, to either savings or we'd have to restore it. But here's what I think is going to happen. And I'm going to give you three, at least four scenarios, so bear with me. And I think I did put these in writing, but I have more information tonight. Looks like right now that the legislature and the governor are going to come to some kind of agreement on ABG grants. The ABG answer was about $216,000, Mr. Sertewol?
$214,000.
$214,000, excuse me. And so we're glad, I think everything I'm reading, we're going to get possibly happen. May have an outside chance of getting all of that. So let me give you the four scenarios that could happen between now and the next board meeting. And I'll go slow and I'll report pieces if you want. If we restore well-lane transportation and get one half of the ABG grant, that would reduce the tax increase to 1.52%, meaning a $46.76 increase for the average taxpayer and overall budget increase of seven tenths of a mil. If we get one half of the ABG grant and use all of it, then we would drop our increase to 1.43%, would be a $44.09 increase for the average taxpayer and an increase of .66 of a mil. If you restore well-lane transportation and we get a full ABG grant, then it will be a 1.37% increase, an average increase of $42.08, an increase of .63 a mil. If we get the, if we get the full ABG grant and we don't, and we still keep the well-lane transportation out, then we would reduce the overall increase to 1.3. Lane Transportation out, then we would reduce the overall increase to one point three percent increase, will reduce the tax increase to the average taxpayer forty dollars and an increase of point six a mil. So I think those, those are significant numbers as we move forward. And again, I want to spend some time reminding you of some things. I understand, it's not that we're insensitive, these are very difficult budget times, but we've been, we have been asked to do more with less as well. And as I related many times, we had three goals in this budget. Certainly to avoid acrimony, also to maintain as many of our educational programs as possible, I think we've done that, and to offer a educationally prudent, a fiscally prudent budget and an educationally sound budget. And I think we've been able to do that. I just want to remind everybody that we treat this very seriously and our staff and I, we spent countless hours. People have no idea that when we make a move, there's a combination and a domino effect. If we're going to make a cut, that means Mr. Serval's got to go back, talk to administrators and change accounts and do all of that. And we talk long and hard before we make any changes. But at the end of the day, I'd just like to give you a little history of where we've been with the index and exceptions. The Act One started in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, basically the year before I got here. There, the district did not file for exceptions. I don't think we qualified for any at that point. Index is three point four oh, and you had a budget increase of three point four oh. My first year back in Pennsylvania, we, again, we did not file for exceptions. We were allowed an increase of four point four percent and we took a four point four percent increase. And I think things started to change in my second year of super penning. My third year, we were allowed an index increase of four point one oh. We wound up with a budget of three point two four cents. Again, how many are there? In two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, a total of exceptions in index, we would have been legally able to raise this budget by five point oh two percent, we came in with an increase of three point eight five percent. Last year, with exceptions in index, it had been four, four point seven nine percent increase, that's allowable, that's legal, we came in with a budget of one point eight three percent. And I think that was a significant difference in what was allowable and what we came up with. And then this year, with the exceptions, with the index, we were legally able to go up to two point nine one percent, now we're at one point five percent. So I think over the last three years, we've done a lot of internal things to control expenditures and I think we've done a pretty good job of doing that. Now, I wasn't here for the last board meeting, but I read the minutes and let me just say, I'm not interested in going back and doing it. I'm not. You folks had a debate, I read the minutes, but I do feel that at some point, since the administration did not offer comments, now we need to do so, just for the record. And I will apologize ahead of time, some of the things I say may be in conflict, but I get paid to say what I think is right for this district. Let me go back to April twenty-third, when we talked about how to take a vote on whether my staff and I were going to prepare a zero tax increase budget. We took a vote, it's five for not to do that. Nonetheless, I want to tell you what happened the next day. Your board president, Chuck, came into the scene. And I think Chuck and I agreed on, I was going to call Chuck, he beat me to the punch. And I think at that point, we agreed that maybe we ought to do the right thing and at least prepare what a zero tax increase would look like with cuts. And so I will let you know that, that Chuck and I agreed on that. But we went to work, my staff and I, I want to tell you, we spent hours on developing that one point four list of cuts. And let me tell you what else I did. I never want to be accused of being extremist or alarmist or anything like that. That's why I took the time to read all those articles and make copies for you. Because I definitely want to show you, this is not something I came up to look crazy or beat a loon or make the cuts so bad that people won't touch it. Those cuts were legit. That's what's going on in state of Pennsylvania. And by giving you those articles, I hope that you demonstrated, at least they saw that the cuts that we had put together for you were not any different than what was going on in state of Pennsylvania. And so we did that. And that's, it's been a lot of time. But I think what, what concerned me the most was, that became the board meeting, it was another presentation. Now, let me say around the back, I don't care who brings up what, any information is good. I think basically for us, for administrative staff, all the time we put into it, if people weren't going to be serious about that stuff, then somebody could give us a call, we wouldn't have done that work and we wouldn't have prepared for looking back at something else. That's all I'm saying. I think our staff has been very good about requesting, getting things out of the common business. We want to be totally transparent, but I think when we have a chance to be prepared, we do a better job. And so let me just mention a couple things. And I don't think it's any surprise that, that our staff would say, our using more fund balance, in our humble opinion, would not be the wise choice. And I'll just start with the obvious. I think you heard from Mr. Shear tonight, one of the major reasons why we won't want to do that. And I'm not going to go over that. I don't think you've heard that for the first time, Mr. Shear's talking about that. And that's something I think worth to education. Also for the public, if people want a good description of what fund balance is, you can go to the Pennsylvania School Boards Association website, there's an excellent Q and A of our fund balances. I think before people jump to conclusions, they ought to read that definition. And I think you'll find that it's not something simplistic or just has a pile of money, that it's a little more complex than that. I also want to take the opportunity to look at just a couple factors. And I don't know who in the minutes mentioned something about capital reserve, but one of the factors in looking at our fund balance, I think, we, I don't know how many times we've given out this one, I know we gave it out to Shear, his name is Capital Reserve, but it's really insightful. And, you know, I look at all the good things I've done, I look at all the bad things I've done. And I admit, when I came here in two thousand and eight, we had about four, four million five hundred thousand in capital reserve. Now we have one point eight million. And I can tell you that the difference is that although we've taken some of the bond refinancing money and funneled it back into capital reserve, we haven't done so because it's allowed us to maintain flexibility and believe it or not, control tax increases. And that's been our major strategy over the last three years. Now, I may make some people uncomfortable, but that's exactly what we've done. Instead of any time we refinance the bond, putting the money back in capital reserve, we've held it out and allowed ourselves to have more flexibility. So if you're looking for reasons how that got somewhat elevated, that's one of the reasons that we kept the bond refinancing so we could be more flexible. And so you've got to look at that in concert with fund balance. Next, I want to remind the public that we are already, are using four point one million dollars fund balance to help balance this budget. We are already using four point one million dollars to balance this budget. And let me explain how we generated that fund balance. If you go and look in and look at our audit figures last year, you're going to find about four point one million dollars left over for last year, for those of you who like that kind of stuff. Let me tell you how that happened. That didn't happen by accident. That happened, that happened deliberately. Because way back in December, this administration, and I hope you remember this, we enacted a freeze. We stopped spending, we stopped powering people. Lessons I learned from being a super penant a long time, this is my twenty-fourth budget, you enact a freeze, you can save a lot of money. There's proof that we did. Also, our employees stepped up their plate and that combination allowed us to generate an additional four point million dollars. That money is turned around and used to balance this budget. Is it the number I wanted to? Absolutely not. That number in and itself is somewhat risky, but it allowed us to keep that tax rate very, very low. But in my humble opinion, four point one million dollars is a max. And I think you've got to keep that in mind. And then, I'm going to say this more for the public than after the board, because I did send a stat to the board and I think it is important, that we look and see what's going on statewide, especially since the governor and some legislators have drawn out the fact that school districts are sitting on a lot of fund balance. So here's the report. If anybody wants a copy, this, see me tomorrow, I'll give you a copy. I have nothing to hide. Here it is. I think there's some interesting statistics. And again, one thing that I learned a long time ago, if you're looking at data, data's very important. So when we look and see what's going on statewide with fund balances, and here they are, five hundred districts, from one to five hundred, starting with Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh has a fund balance of one hundred and forty-eight million, that's kind of funny. And then we go all the way down to, I think, Pocono Mountain has a deficit of ten million. So here's what is relevant to us in East Penn. We rank seventy-second out of five hundred districts. Forty-two point two percent of all districts do not have a committed fund balance, that means the others do. And we'll talk about that in a moment. Only thirteen districts ranked above East Penn do not have a committed fund balance. Only thirteen, total of seventy-two, do not have a committed fund balance. So I know we had a discussion about, and you heard that from Mr. Shear tonight, that one of the recommendations we're going to make is that we do look at a committed fund balance moving forward. East Penn, we'll get that in a moment. East Penn ranks five out of nine Lehigh County districts, fifth, right to Melville. Four above us, four below us. Southern Lehigh and northwestern have considerable smaller budgets than East Penn, yet have larger total funds and reserves than we do. Six other Lehigh Valley school districts, Eastern Valley, Saka Valley, North Hampton, they have larger total reserve funds than East Penn. According to two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven data, East Penn ranks thirty-fourth in total budgets throughout the state, thirty-fourth. That means our budget in terms of share dollars is thirty-four, and yet we rank seventy-second in fund balance. We're also the twenty-fourth largest school district in Pennsylvania. Again, our fund balance ranking seventy-two. So I certainly want to make the public aware that our fund balance is not out of proportion. And I think it is very important that we look at other school districts throughout the state of Pennsylvania. The other thing that I didn't want to talk about, and you heard from Mr. Shear, capital reserve, where we rank at fund balance, and I want to talk just a moment about, about forecasts. This year, a couple of you be asking to do forecasts. And I did put forecast in, in words. I didn't put the numbers behind a forecast. Probably going to do that tonight. I'm going to do that tonight. Now, one of the things about Lehigh Valley and reassessment going on in Lehigh County is that we're locked into the index next year of one point seven. That's our index for next year. That's our limit. We also, if you noticed, over the last couple of years, that the total number of exceptions that we're eligible for is declining. And that's by design, that's the legislature, new laws are kicking in. So conservatively, Mr. Glancy, Mr. Serval and I believe that if we apply and are eligible, negative total might be seven hundred thousand eligible. So next year, the eligible funds that we might be able to raise through taxation would be one point nine million dollars, less than the money that we could raise this year. Let's look at the fine liabilities that we know are already in place for next year. To contracts, whatever. Salaries are going to go up two point two million next year. Retirement, teachers is going to go up one point three million. We estimate health insurance, seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Remember that our consortium has done a remarkable job the last two years and had a zero increase this year. And last year, only a tiny increase. We're not going to be able to keep that increase at zero forever. In fact, we've been using some of our fund balance there. If you remember, three years ago, one of the reasons we had a spike in healthcare cost was that the consortium chose to use this fund balance. And so what happens when you open a fund balance, you get a split. So that's a small example of why, where we looked. Also, charter schools with increases in seven generations, increase in students, increase in costs unless the legislature does anything to convert it, I guess, although it's movement, I'll believe it when I see it, we're anticipating charter, charter school costs to go up another seven hundred and sixteen thousand next year. And transportation, our contract is locked in, we're looking at another hundred and ninety-four thousand. I have no idea about special ed and ELL populations, but you know, over the last couple of years, populations in both sectors have gone up. Nine more artistic kids coming in next year, correct? They're expensive. We know that we're looking at kindergarten enrollment increases of sixty or seventy kids. What we don't know, and again, we reported back about a month ago, we meet with the real estate agency, we do our due diligence, we know homes are selling. We'll know in September if we're seeing a spike in enrollment. New staff, I would be totally shocked if I had to come back to you in August and at least recommend a couple of staff members specifically in special ed. Because we budget to the max. And when we get, and we're going to be audited this year. And if you remember, the last two years, when Will Lane opened, we put in two more teachers for high classes, that's our budget. Last year was what, two special ed teachers, we're budgeting. So we can get by next year, sure, I can squeeze the budget, but that means we've got to increase those positions and the budget out. And I'm really scared of that. I'm really scared about sequestration. Most people don't know what that means. Hey, ask yourself, how are things going in Washington? Anybody think that the president of the Congress is going to cut a deal? I'm not certain. And that could mean unbelievable cuts in special ed funding in Title I. Title I, well, you could get by and say, well, feds aren't going to fund it, we don't give extra help to our kids, maybe we can get by, but not special ed. Nobody's going to come in and tell us violate the IEPs. And so we could be looking at a ton of money not coming into this district. And then, cost of living, and right now, the CPI is about two point eight percent, just the cost of doing business, gas, supplies, whatever. So when I do those calculations, revenues over here, expenditures, I can honestly tell you that when we start our budget process in September, I'm already looking at a deficit of three point two million dollars. And again, for that reason alone, I would be reluctant to say, let us, let the fund balance alone. We're going to need every tool that we can to help manage the budget process next year to come up with the result that we had this year. Or some of the other concerns I have that I can't quantify right now, real estate tax appeals. I don't know what's going on, I read the morning call today, how many people? One out of four get reduction in their appeals. We know we have, I forget what company it is, Allen something, right? Second largest back to here. They're in court right now. What's that? Allen's applying. We could lose that appeal as well. As Mr. Glancy talked about, the news, we don't know the overall impact of the news. And then certainly, how about Friday's news with daytime? Serena Jones, I have no idea of how many of those folks live in the East Penn district. So it's all awful, but for that reason, for those reasons alone, I would ask the board not to consider using any more of the term. Aren't there any questions about the budget where we are right now?
Hey, who has questions for Dr. Seidenberg?
Thank you. Let's just hope that we get the ABG grants so we can reduce this budget even further. And by the way, if there's something that my staff and I come up with over the next two weeks, I think our history has proven that we will do the right thing. Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you, Dr. Seidenberg. I just want to point out though, that's no guarantee that we'll have a state budget within the next two weeks. Can't count our chickens before the pets. All right, on item, personnel items... All right, on item, personnel items, Dr. Seidenberger has informed me that they're withdrawing for next meeting the Edelink systems incorporated agreement number 3. So we only have items 2 and 4 on the agenda. Does anybody have any objection to combining those 2?
Some of it.
Any discussion? None appearing, Ms. Burso, will you call a roll please?
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Urnschau.
Aye.
Ms. Halli.
Aye.
Mr. Bowles.
Aye.
Nine noise.
Okay, we have item 6 policy, 4 policy of 250. Motion on that? Second? Okay, a motion in the second, is there any discussion? None appearing, Ms. Burso, will you call a roll please?
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Urnschau.
Aye.
Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Halli.
Aye.
Mr. Bowles.
Aye.
Nine noise.
We've already had a lot of discussion about legislative. I will try to indicate a few other things that are coming through. There's some speculation in Harrisburg right now about the budget that they're trying to get that date of the 13th passed because on the 15th, there will be an announcement of how much revenue they've actually collected, and it might be higher than what they were using for the budget figures. And if so, then of course, there would be more money available, which would then be a sticking point with some of the negotiators. So that's the reason for the 13th. Representative Flex bill is House Bill 2364. Having cosponsors is nice, but sometimes even cosponsors don't vote for your bill when it comes out on the floor. Cosponsors are just, everybody can say that they did something. And not that they accomplished anything, but they did something. So there's a big difference. We've got to make sure that the heat is kept on, the legislature, to attempt to get some kind of relief in this charter and cyber school funding situation and more accountability. Taxpayer money should come with accountability. There shouldn't be anybody who gets taxpayer money and expects to go unaccountable for it. And that includes private, parochial, charter, and public schools. Public schools, you can come into the podium, you can come into the office, the podium to make your points, the office to get your documents, and you can check the budgets, you can check the payroll, you can check the checks. And anybody who takes public money should be willing to do the same thing for any citizen who wants to come in and check on how public money is being spent. That's my opinion. And that's what we need to have there. There are a number of other strange and wonderful things coming through. More unfunded mandates are in the pipeline, some of them have been passed. And somebody says it's great that you need to educate everybody about sudden cardiac arrest, that's fine and dandy, but when you mandate training for teachers, that's an expense that the school district has to pay and not state. And that comes in a time when we're worried about all kinds of funds not being there in our budget. And just to have somebody siphoning more out for something that is a questionable effect. And questionable whether or not schools should be the ones dealing with those issues is just mind-boggling during a time when we're talking about cutting over $1 billion from the state total educational expenditures. That's pretty much it for legislative. Unless anybody has any questions right now, it's again silly budget season. Mr. Stolz?
Going back to the charter school reimbursement, which would be nice if we got, considering the personal push for school choice, which I support, but I also support state funding in conjunction with that. Do you happen to have, or can you at least get me perfectly by Wednesday, the total budget figure and the state budget for those funds the last time?
How much they paid in charter school payments?
Yes.
I'll see if I can find that.
I, I'll be at a meeting.
We'll call, we'll call school as a good.
On Wednesday, I'll be at a meeting with the governor, so having that would be nice.
Okay, we'll try to get that. Anything else, legislative? All right, we have business operations. Yeah. Number 82, the other educators and teachers skipped over that. Ms. Fuller for Carter Lehigh Elementary.
Thank you. I'd just like to report that as of May 9, 356 desensities were receiving services in the heart of the high community. 62 are classified as major assignments. A debt for hearing impaired, emotional support, life skills, and multiple disabilities. And then there are study services that include reading and interpreter, occupational therapy, speech and language pathology, work-based learning. I just wanted to mention that Carter Lehigh Elementary doesn't have a camp to train these students. And to help fund that camp, they have a golf tournament every year, which is run every next Tuesday, organized by the foundation. So they are doing their utmost to try to provide funding so that students continue to receive services they need, even on the floor of parks throughout the year. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. Any questions for Ms. Fuller? And then we'll move on to the Lehigh Career and Technical Institute side. Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Hi.
Doing the report for the last 2 meetings. We have meetings on April 25th and May 23rd, since we last had a report. On April 25th, we approved Adult Workforce Education Department to enter into agreements with local industries. This is our special agreements for local industries, looking for certain types of training for employees, Be Brown Medical, Incorporated Johnson &amp; Johnson, and Just Born Inc. in April. Probably most importantly, on 25th, we approved the appointment of Bishop Bader as Business Administrator to replace Randy Hensinger at a salary of $96,000. We also approved the instructors for the ever-popular Camp LCTI. Session 1 is June 18th to 21st, Session 2 is June 25th to 28th. You can still get your applications in. If you look at the flyer, they have some wonderful courses for the summer. Alice in Wonderland, AOT, Learn and Explore the Art of Digital Movie Animation through the Object Oriented Alice Program. Big Rigs and Engines/Diesel Technology. Ever wonder how those big trucks get down the highway? Comes the engines, transmissions, and more. Students get to take a wonder part and put it back together again. Now, these refer students throughout the valley, and the variety is impressive. And all the reports I get of children who go is that this is wonderful. So if you get a chance, take a look at that. May 23rd meeting, we approved once again special relationship with Nestle Waters in North America and Cactus Wellhead. Once again, looking for training for specific types of skills in the workplace. Sadly, we approved the resignation of Jane Vannam, the Secretary, the Executive Director, who is a person who does everything there. She started for a long time and very well, and we're all sad to see her go. I can't say enough good things about her. Before the meeting on the 23rd, we had an awards ceremony with many of the students. Some East Penn students have received awards. Evan Baral got the Elmer Gates Small Engines Recreation Vehicle Repair Award. I got to talk to him and his mother. Patrice Maddox got the Elmer Gates Award in Positiveology. Sierra Jones had the DECA, was in a competition for DECA in Hotel and Lodging Management, placed. Joshua Petrohoj, DECA, once again, Handling Material Logistics, in place. Laura Ritter, FPLA, Work Processing 2, got a first place. Kenesha Grant, Skills USA, another competition, Commercial Banking, took a first place. Benjamin Newell, Skills USA Electronics Technology, placed. Caitlin Benikoff, Skills USA Food and Beverage Service, took a first place. Randy O'Brien, Skills USA Nursing Assistant, also placed. And I got the chance to meet Alicia Anders, who gave one of the speeches at the graduation yesterday. What a positive person she is. So much energy and just a pleasure to get to meet. She was the LTCR representative graduation yesterday, and I was so pleased to hear her speak. If anybody has anything else to add, please feel free, but that's the end of my report. Any additions or comments, questions for Mr. Rose, Ms. Fuller?
Thank you, very complete report, Mr. Rose. I just found it interesting during the awards ceremony time, one of the employers are invited to come and speak if they so wish. And one of the employers, I believe it was an automotive repair company, was himself a 1973 graduate of LCTI. And he has been bringing students in ever since and hiring them. So you can see how this school perpetuates the economy. It was really wonderful to see.
Any comments or questions? We'll move on to business operations. Any objection to moving, actually, item 1 is an informational item, as is item number 8. So the active items are items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Does anybody have any objection to the body numbers? I have a motion, please. Move in second, is there any comment on the motion? None appearing, Ms. Burso, will you call a roll please?
Ms. Fuller, Ms. Donches.
Aye.
Mr. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Urnschau.
Aye.
Mr. Polakana.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Halli.
Aye.
Mr. Bowles.
Aye.
Nine noise.
Is there any new business to come before the board this evening, Ms. Hyde?
I just have 2 things real quick. Another we have transportation coming up in the next budget. I heard that here comes some staff that the buses may not be turning the week of finals, and some even came up to me and here with 2 kids. Is there something under the contract in and out officially we can do at that time period? Sign-in sheet or?
First of all, we have to be careful legally what we do. But I don't disagree with you spiritually. However, there are some districts we know about locally that do some of some things, and I would have to deny that we're involved in those type of things. But it does make sense to try to talk to students and get a commitment if they're not going to use less than 100 days. Again, that's walking the edge, but if we can cut some money and have some kind of waiver program, I don't even know if it's legal, but we can look at that. But I don't, I want to let, you know, we don't disagree. And I'll certainly, will admit, that's the case. Though in the exam, we can also, with more, one of these.
Right, okay, wonderful, thank you. And the last thing is that I was really interested in talking about having a Twitter account, Facebook account, I think that's awesome, it's just the way it's going. There's a new one called Pinterest, I'm sure some of you've heard about it. And you can actually pin stuff on there, sort of make a port, and that goes directly to your Facebook account. And we use it all the time at LTC, we can actually pin documents up, we go out with their services, a couple of ways of dress, and things like that. So I hope the district will look into that, too, it seems to be the way to go.
Well, we're going to, as I said before, we're going to have Mr. Moen do the update in August. And we never talked about the vampire through Northwest, or those nice art about the Ops. They could be number 1 for a little bit. Or let them be happy for just about a month.
Thank you, Ms. Hyde, Ms. Urnschau?
I'd just like to echo Dr. Seidenberger's comments about the graduation. Graduation, the students were exceptionally respectful during this graduation ceremony. As you said, I saw no beach balls, I only heard one air horn twice. There were no paper airplanes, or wads of paper, or any of the other nonsense that we've had in years past. Our students conducted themselves with decorum, with dignity, and they really showed respect, not only for themselves and their peers, but also the family members who were in the audience. I'd certainly like to congratulate them for being an outstanding example of good citizenship in East Penn. I'd also like to thank those who participated in the graduation committee. I joined that committee. We got, the first time we met, we had a printout of every email that Mr. Pepperato received after the previous graduation. Some of them were condemning the staff for what they did or did not do. Some of them were condemning the students and saying the staff did what they should. Others took a balanced approach. We read all of those, we discussed them, we brainstormed ideas to improve things. And then Mr. Pepperato engaged the students. The students were the ones who came up with the idea of interspersing the speeches among the handing out of graduation diplôme folders. So having a speaker and then 25% of the class, a speaker, 25% of the class, that worked amazingly well. It was so smooth, and it really kept everyone's attention and interest. The student speeches were excellent this year. I really can't speak kindly enough about how well-done this was, and my thanks to everyone who was involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Urnschau. Reflect and say the same things, ditto. It was a graduation worthy of a Merit for Mayas High School and East Penn education. And I want to commend all the students and their family members and the staff, who are all doing an excellent job to make commencement what it should be, a joyous but solemn occasion for recognizing our students. And I also want to mention that the number of honor students and the number of students wearing the collar of the National Honor Society in this graduation was a tremendous show of success for East Penn, its students, and its educational program. And I was truly honored to have their participating in the ceremonies. Ms. Fuller?
If I can add another, slightly different perspective. My husband was a member of the graduating class of Mayas High School of 1962. So this was their 50th anniversary celebration. And we did not accompany the graduates who came from Washington State, California, Maine, the Carolinas, Virginia, Chicago, and Florida, and the ones in between. We did not accompany them on the high school tour, but certainly spoke with those who did as a pick and following. And they were delighted and amazed. They had high compliments, not only for the facility and the climate of the facility, but the tour guides. One group was toured by one of our assistant principals. I'm sorry, I don't know the name, but I'm sure you do, because I've heard of mine now. And the other were, the others were toured by mentor级student ambassadors, who I understand were absolutely delightful. So everyone agreed it was well worth the trip back to Durof, Merit. And congratulations to everyone for making it a wonderful, a wonderful weekend for those returning graduates.
One more new business to come? One more, Ms. Donches?
I would like to say, obviously, my first commitment, that I was glad that I attended. My father went to Paris, literally, and it was exciting to see all of them. And we got published, I think they made. I could say, I'm going to have the budget. About the $60,000 a year that you're saying is how much per person or per household would be increased. I still would have laughed and say, if my unit was $60,000, my house would be $32,000. So if you took $2,000, $6,000 to the present, and we're adding on $570,000 extra, that's an increase, and that's all compounded. So I think that we may have to look at the year to light if we could incorporate it into talking about it in our voting discussion next time, how that means compounding over 20 years, because of the past, which is important. So what is the best people?
Ms. Donches? Matters, we had an executive session prior to this meeting. It discussed personnel, real estate, and negotiations, confidential matters. The next meeting of the board will be on June 25th, here in the boardroom. And I now entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.